Hello, my name is Ralph Fishwood and this is my partner Andrea Garcia Sazalati. We're here to demonstrate CPR and do a CPR program here tonight, here in the chambers. I'm gonna start out just demonstrating, showing you what we're gonna do, and then we're gonna get into doing CPR on the mannequins ourselves, okay? So, somebody's unresponsive, I'm gonna call out, "Call 911, get an AED." Gonna come down, gonna shake the person, "You okay? You okay?" I'm gonna put my ear down and look at the chest to see if I see any chest rise or fall, and at the same time, I'm gonna be feeling for a pulse, for no more than 10 seconds. If I don't feel a pulse, I'm gonna put my heel of my hand on the center of the chest, and grab, and get my knees up against them, and start doing compressions. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31.
Analyzing heart rhythm. Do not touch the patient. Shock advised.
So we make sure that nobody's touching the patient when that's saying...
I'm clear, you're clear, we're all clear.
Deliver shock now, shock delivered.
And you start right on, and again with the compressions, right after the shock is given. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 29, 30. So you know when the 2 minutes is up? When the AED says, "Three," when the AED says, "We're gonna analyze." And after it gets done analyzing, we'll switch out. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. So that's, that's 5 rounds, so that's my 2 minutes. We'll switch out and go... So, we'll get right into going on to the mannequins now, alright? So, it's 5 rounds of 30 to 2, that's equal to 2 minutes. That's when you check for the pulse again. It analyzes and is saying shock advised, so... We're gonna shut it off, we're gonna get into just going pieces of doing, through doing the CPR, okay?
5 rounds of 30 to 2?
5 rounds of 30 compressions to 2 breaths.
Does it usually take that long? I mean, if somebody's out, not breathing, does it take that long?
Longer. Yep. Usually, we're out there saying, "Thank God we've got the Lucases now," which does the CPR for us, but yeah, we were... It's the continuous CPR, cuz your, the heart is a pump, so you're, you're becoming the pump now. You're squishing the heart, pushing the blood out, and then as you release, it's drawing blood back in. So, building up that pressure takes a long time. So, it's better if you just do compressions and don't worry about the breathing when you first start, cuz you wanna build up that pressure of the blood circulating. So, doing 3 rounds of it, just the compressions and the breathing, cuz every minute that you stop, you're losing 10% of the ability to get the person back. Depends on how bad their heart is, or what's made them stop, the heart stop.
But you don't know that.
We don't know that, doing just CPR, no. But, we are, after 20 minutes of good CPR, we're circulating, we're getting their chemistry, or the, all the cells in their body, more or less back, oxygenated, and we're getting more saves, or people coming back with spontaneous circulation, so...
How long do you do the 30 to 2?
So, until you get pulses back. Yep. If you're the one, just one person, you do it until you get exhausted and you can't do it anymore. If, if you keep on, if, if you have your cellphone handy, you can call 911. You can do it with one hand, call 911, put it on speaker, and ask for help, to get somebody there, but if not, then you're, yes, you should be dragging the person closest to the door, so we... Or somewhere where you can get a phone, call, then come back and start CPR, so it's continuous.
So what happens if you overestimate the number, or you underestimate?
Compressions, you just, if you're counting out loud, you do it, and then you just... So you're actually causing a slight respiration with the compression. So, breathing is good, but the pump is even more important. Every time you stop, then you have to keep on building up that pressure that you just built up, so...
Can you break something?
Yes, and you, so, nothing's, nothing's more important than if, if you're doing CPR, if you break a rib, you don't worry about it, because they're dead already, right? You're trying to get them back to life. So, it's more prevalent in the elderly than it is in younger people, cuz we still have the pliable chests as younger people, and I will consider myself younger.
Yeah, we do too.
So, annually, there's 350 people that are dying in their house. 350,000 people dying in their houses, collapsing, no CPR being started and stuff. And then we're getting there, and we're starting, and that's, that's across the United States. So, starting CPR is the most important thing. And if you're just doing, just the compressions, that's even better, so when the ambulance get there, we got the blood circulating, and it's, it is exchanging gases, you're offloading the carbon dioxide, and unloading the oxygen, to circulate to the body, so... And we can measure that with our monitors and stuff, out there in the street, with the EKG monitors that we carry.
So if you're alone in the house, it didn't, it didn't take you long to do 5, to do 5 rounds of 30 to? Probably, less time than it would be for an ambulance to come. How do you know not to do another 5 rounds of 30 to?
You do it until somebody's there to take, take over for you. That's why, when you go down, you say, "Call," if somebody's around, to call 911, and then they can come and help. So, after I was done, she was gonna do compressions, so I can get a rest, and she will do it, the 5 rounds of 30 to 2, and I'll be ventilating while she was controlling the AED. So you swap off every 5 rounds, so you get that breather. It's, so it's 5 rounds of 30 to 2. If you don't have an AED, then you can stop and check for a pulse. Got no pulses returning, get right back on to doing compressions.
So, your mouth wasn't exactly on her mouth, I know that's a dummy.
Correct, even, because, again...
How do you exactly do that?
So, when you bring it down, you're gonna tilt the head back a little bit, pinch the nose, you're gonna put, completely put your mouth over her mouth, or his mouth, give the breath to see the rise of the chest, and you're gonna give your 2 breaths. So you would give it, I'm gonna use a shield here, so I can demonstrate for you. So, you're gonna tilt the head, pinch the nose, and then you're gonna get back on the compressions. So, compressing it down, 2, 2 and 1/2 inches, and when you come up, you gotta make sure that you're totally released from pressing on the chest, so that the lungs and the heart can expand again, to fill up with air, and also to fill up with the blood.
So if the head is not, the neck is not pushed back, what happens?
So, it, so it might be the tongue that's in the way, you might not be able to get the breath in the end. So you tilt the head back, pinch the nose, tilting the head back opens the airway, so that gets the tongue off the back of the throat, so that's why you're giving the breath.
So if you don't pinch the nose, and you're just breathing it?
It's gonna come right back out the nose, cuz it goes in, and it's gonna come right back out this way.
You know when a football player, football thrower does, the only thing they did on him was compressions?
Yeah.
That was the first time I'd ever seen that you don't have to breathe in to...
And again, like I said, they're trying to keep the pump going, right? Keeping it going. If you stop, then you have to build it back up, so every time you stop, you're losing valuable time and, and the ability to oxygenate the blood that you're trying to circulate. Any questions right now, on what you just saw?
Quick question, we're looking for a pulse, so once you feel a pulse, do you have to continue to...
No, no.
As long as you have a pulse, then your heart's beating, right?
And if you don't feel a pulse, and they, and when they, if the EMTs and the paramedics get there, and they say, "Oh, he's got a pulse," you're not doing anything, you're assisting that heart to pump, still. So you're not doing any damage, you can still do... Right, cuz you might not, the blood pressure might be so low that you're not feeling it. So you're still doing compression. If you can't feel it, don't worry, and it could be a heartbeat there, but you just can't feel it just yet.
How do you feel from the pulse? I know it's on the neck, but it's...
So, 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 you're gonna take, feel your Adam's apple, and then you're gonna come down off to the side, and you should be able to feel the carotid pulse right there.
Don't do it with your thumb, your thumb has its own pulse.
Okay.
Do you have a pulse?
I don't, take a pill.
You don't feel mine? Does it matter, right or left, it doesn't?
Either side is gonna be the same. So, you come, so if you, right here on the Adam's apple, you push down towards the side of your neck.
Oh, you're gonna push it?
Yep.
I feel it.
I feel it.
So, again, with the AED, when you go for, somebody comes back with it, the first thing we do with an AED, we take it out of its case, we turn it on, when we follow the prompts for it. It's gonna say, uh, it's an AED, and it says, "Apply pads." So you're gonna take the pads, and it's, oh, there's gonna be a diagram where to place it. One's gonna be here, and one's gonna be here on the left side of the chest, on the side of the chest. So it's gonna, so when the electricity goes through, it's gonna come across the chest to this pad, and it goes from the pad to pad. It decides the how many, how much electricity that the, the person's gonna get, the AED itself. We have no control of it, so all you're gonna do... So, there's another way of doing it. The infants, they, they place it here over the top of the chest, and one on the back of the chest underneath the shoulder blade. If you wanna do it with an adult, it's, it's more of a direct shock for the adult too. You can put it here, and you can put it to the back. Everybody else wants it that way, right shoulder, left chest. But, nothing's wrong, we're putting it right over the heart, and underneath the, the shoulder blade in the back. And it's just more of a direct shock that way.
And how does the machine determine?
It, it has a computer chip in it, it's analyzing to see if there's a rhythm. It's looking to see if it just sees quivering of the heart, which is just gonna be a squiggly line. It might not, it could be big in amplitude, and it could be small in amplitude. It's looking besides a straight line. If it sees a straight line, then it's just gonna tell you to do CPR. If it sees a rhythm, it's gonna tell you to do unshockable, and it's not gonna tell you that you have a rhythm back. None of them do, but it will tell you to, that it sees a shockable rhythm, which is a ventricular fibrillation. They call it, it's just where the heart is just quivering, and we're shocking it to get it out of that quivering. Sometimes we shock it, and it goes acisally to a straight line, and then we do CPR, and then it comes back. Or sometimes it comes right back to a regular rhythm, after we give it the shock. Okay?
The other thing too, is those, those things are recording, so if you want to apply those, and you're giving CPR, it'll know if you're performing the CPR.
Yep. Some of them have a, have a chip in it that it tells you to press deeper on it, it comes to the pads. There's like a little hockey puck where you place your heel, and it'll tell you to press deeper and go quicker with the compressions. But the main thing is, so that you don't get tired quick, when you get alongside to do compressions, you get your knees right up to the side of the patient, you get your shoulders right over the center of the chest, your heel, and then you lift up on the hand, so that you're using your body weight to do the compressions. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30. So it's always gonna be 30 to 2, adult, child, and infant. On the infant, we're gonna go a little bit quicker, on the infants, which, so the adult we want 100, 120. With a child, we want, or the infant, we want 120 plus. So you're gonna be squeezing that chest a lot, because their heart beats. Especially infants and newborns, their heart beats are over 100 constantly, so... Now when you're bagging like that, do you have to pull the head back too, or is the bag... So, yes, well, so, when we get to that part, I'm gonna show you how to hold it. It's like a C grip. You're gonna hold it like a C, I'm sorry. I'm gonna put it down, so, when you apply the mask, you're gonna put a C around the, the mask, and then lift up with the 3 fingers of the chin lifting the head back, and then you give your 2 breaths, that way, okay? Don't worry about the likes that are coming up on these, or I just want good, good CPR.
I'm glad you said there were 6 mannequins, right?
Yeah, 6 dummies.
I'm the 6th dummy? Oh, I guess so, huh?
That works too, doesn't have to be one way or the other. It depends on, you know, if you're in a house, there's, there's stuff all around, so you're working around everything else in the house too. So, first thing we're gonna do, we see somebody collapse, we're gonna say, "Call 911 and get the AED," right?
Call 911. Get the AED.
Gonna go up, and then you're gonna shake the person. To see if they're arousable. If they're not arousable, you're gonna, you're gonna quickly look, put your face to their, to their... Just see if you feel any breathing, and you look for the chest movement. If there's none, gonna feel for the pulse, no longer than 10 seconds. And then put your heel right in the center of their chest, put your knees right up against it, and then you're gonna start doing compressions. Count with 1, 2, 3. Alright, 2 breaths were given. It, no, it, so these are mannequins, they, they won't tilt back?
Oh, okay, this way.
Really, it's, no, right, so, so it's just a matter of, right. So, and if you, and again, if you so choose that you don't wanna give the breath, if it's not a family member, it's not somebody you know, you can just keep on doing compressions. Count to 30, then you start over again, count to 30. Do 5 rounds, then you're gonna check for a pulse.
Alright.
Alright.
No, it's not easy at a pump. Mine are too slow.
So, if you remember, the song "Staying Alive," that's the tempo you wanna keep up at. Staying alive, staying alive, ah, 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 staying alive. So, after, after 5 cycles, you can stop?
I don't even know where I am now.
Oh, alright, alright, so, everybody comfortable doing compressions?
Yes.
No, that's hard work. That's not, you don't...
No, it's, right. So, again, it is hard work, so that's why we do, so if somebody's coming in to help, to help you, it's after, at that point, you're gonna switch out, alright? Here, hers, I'm gonna switch you with Brad, how's that?
No, no, it's okay.
Cuz this chest is, might be a little bit easier for you to do compressions on. Just see if you can...
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so... Yep, but the thing is, to, to make it so that you don't get exhausted, is making sure you keep the knees right up close to the chest, your shoulders over the center of the chest, and use your body weight, use the compression. You're gonna do 2 to 2 and 1/2 inches of chest, right?
Say a person, when you're doing the compressions, like here, you know you're gonna hit the bottom. Do you, do you know when you...
So, you're gonna go, you, you can be going too far, so you gotta watch to see if you, you don't wanna hit...
How do you know we're not hurting someone? I think that's the joke.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, so, you, so you want, you can judge 2 inches when you start doing it on a regular person, but people, some people are bigger muscular, you're not gonna, you're not gonna compress them. And the people that are thin, and, thin, very thin and, and vile, right? So that, when you go to do a compression, you're gonna hear crack, 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 and you can't stop, you gotta keep on going.
Really?
I hope I never hear that.
Then, we hear it almost every time we do CPR.
Really?
You'll hear ribs crack.
Yep, yeah.
How about the sternum?
The ribs, that's, that's what's, then the sternum becomes floating. So, but you're using the sternum to compress everything, to, to get the, the blood getting moved around from the heart.
This is why I can never be...
Oh, I can never do this job. God bless, she dies.
So, uh, but that's what we're doing, um, so, we'll break up, and we'll do just these 2 mannequins, we'll have a second person come in with the AED now, alright?
Okay.
And then saying, "I got the AED," and then, but before we get to that part, I wanna just show everybody, and see if we can get people just using that C method, alright? So I don't know what's your dominant hand, but if you use, so if you're right-handed, you can... We just lift, lift up the chin, you're gonna place it over the mouth and the nose, lift up the chin, and squeeze, you don't have to go right down, and just, you're gonna watch for the chest rise. That's all, alright?
Did that chest rise? Did you see that chest rise?
We're gonna watch it, cuz it's not a good, good connection, but, so you tilt the head back a little bit more, yeah, and then... You're gonna, the pointed part of the mask goes over the nose, and the round part goes down to the chin. So you make the C, and you lift up the head with, by the jaw, right? And then you're gonna give the ventilation.
Yeah, that one works, yeah.
So, that's a small, this is more the child, so it might be not as pliable as this adult one, okay?
So what happens if you're too nervous, and you add an extra breath?
Doesn't matter. It's, it's the more, again, the most important thing is compressions. I'd rather see you just doing compressions until EMS gets there, because we need the circulation. Again, squeezing the chest and letting it go is just like a breath, right? Squeezing it, it's like you're exhaling, your, your hands come off, so, you take...
Cuz they want you to create a C, and then you're just 3 fingers.
With just one hand, so, I'm gonna take this over here, so you can squeeze this.
No, it's coming out, I can feel it coming out the nose here, yeah.
Let me see that hand.
Yeah.
This is the C, and this is gonna feel on the bottom of the chin. Now you're gonna lift it back.
Yeah.
Now...
Oh, yeah, there we go.
I was gonna say, yeah, it's the C over that, and then the 3 fingers.
So, C, and these 3 fingers just lift up on the, the bottom of your jaw. Jaw, and then, so, you're using the C to hold it against the...
You gotta move this finger.
There you go, see?
Yeah.
Yep. So, we're gonna make a C around the neck of the mask, lift up just like that.
Can you say that again, please?
So, as you, you're gonna grab the mask, and you're gonna take this, make a C around the neck of, of the mask, and you're gonna use your 3 fingers to lift up on the bottom jaw, and give the... You feel comfortable with this?
Yep.
Mrs. Gomes, you wanna try this one? So, tilt, you're gonna, it's easier this way, alright? So you can stay right where you are. This is the C, this is the 3 that's gonna lift up on the bottom jaw, and you're using the C to press down on the face. So, no, so we gotta tilt it up. There we go. Tilt it back, now press. Yep. Just like that. Feel better about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Super. And we'll have Mrs. Gomes do it. Oh, I didn't see you already had one, sorry about that.
You gotta save somebody else now.
So... So the C around the neck, and lifting up on the bottom jaw. So... You don't have to come this way with it, you can, if you get to the head, no, go straight that way, so you're positioning that way. This is just gonna come, there you go, lift him back, and press him down, yeah, there was one. Now that went down again, so, there we go.
Stay.
There we go. There we go.
It's coming out.
Yep, so, but it's, it's this, so it's this position that you want, right?
You know why, this is a, this is a giddy one, that's a collapsed one, that's why, you gave me the...
You don't have that pump, how strong should you breathe into the...
So just enough to see chest rise. It's not, you're not trying to blow out the lungs, you're not trying to blow up a balloon. You're only trying to get the chest to rise just a little bit.
See the chest rising?
Yep.
Okay, well, that one's a broken one.
Yeah.
That's broke.
So, when you go and get it, you bring it to the patient, first thing you're gonna do is, turn the machine on. You're gonna listen to the prompts.
Apply pads to patient's bare chest.
This one's showing you where it needs to be.
Plug-in pads connector, next to flashing light.
And this one's showing you where it needs to be, and then...
Apply pads, plug-in connector.
So, once we plug, once it says analyzing, the person that's doing the chest compression can stop. We don't want anybody to...
Shock advised, charging. Stay clear of patient.
How far away should you be?
As long as you're not touching it. So, nobody's touching, I'm clear, we're all clear, and then I press a button, and get right on the chest, and start doing CPR. Don't worry about if it's got a pulse or not, we just wanna get back on circulation, cuz it took so much time for this to analyze, and that's the thing. So we need blood circulating, to get oxygen to the brain, to the heart, to the lungs, all the major organs that are in play here. So, if you're using gloves, not so much.
No?
No. I was seeing, used to be a lot of doctors at the emergency room that were doing it, having their gloves on, and doing CPR at the same time.
That's what I've always been told, with different training.
But, for everybody else, layperson, we're not doing it. We're staying away, let the machine do the shock, get right back on the chest. Don't worry about checking for a pulse, we're gonna get back on compressions, again.
And when is the machine gonna talk to me again?
2 minutes.
2 minutes.
Oh, that's right.
That's your 2 minutes of compressions, then it comes back.
Right, so, you've already done one set, you should just finish out, and you're, you're gonna do an extra set, and then we'll tell you to stop analyzing. And then we'll tell you to stop analyzing patient. At that time, you can switch off. Somebody taking over chest compressions, you're the one doing the ventilations at that time.
How long does that go? Will they do it every two minutes?
Every two minutes, doesn't matter, so in two, in till you turn it off, right? Or when they get there, they're going to rip it off, pull this out so that, they're going to put their own pads on.
If it's 20 minutes, it'll still keep, every two minutes we'll do that.
And sometimes it's that way. So, if they fall in the water in a pool, you pull them out. You dry them off quickly. Don't worry about it. You're going to shock, you're going to use it to shock with. As long as the pads stick, you'll be alright. For men that have a hairy chest, sometimes there's two sets of pads inside it. Use the first one and you wax them. Boom! Pull the hair right off. But you need it so that you can get skin to pad contact. So don't worry about it. Use a pad, rip the hair off, get the good contact. See, it was just two minutes.
Let me ask you a question, when you mentioned about pulling them out of water.
Yep.
Say they got water in their lungs, does the water come out once you start compressions?
Once you're doing compression, yep, it will start. So, at that time, you can turn the head to the side. And it will, and, yep.
To the side, not on their stomach?
No, you want, yes, you want to turn their head to the side, so and if they start vomiting, you're going to do the same thing. You're going to turn their head to the side as you're still doing compressions. The other person can turn their head to the side and allow them to vomit and stuff.
But what's the key there? Does that mean they're breathing again?
No, that means that you're pressing and the stomach contacts, because they're even coming up, up through the esophagus.
Water's in the lungs, so you just push.
Water's in the lungs and the stomach and stuff, so doing compressions, you're you're compressing a pressure inside the belly. So it's going to irritate and come up. There are some people that don't vomit at all, but there are, for the majority of the time, people do vomit because they've usually just eaten and stuff. And then they feel that indigestion and they blame it just on the indigestion, right? And it's actually them having a heart attack.
So if they're not, if they're not in water, it's normal for them to vomit? It's not you pressing in the wrong place?
No, no. No, you give them ventilation, so we can't block air going down the esophagus into the belly. So we're blowing up into the belly a little bit. So that can only blow up so much also before all the contents are going to come up. So we use suction at that time. You, if you have gloves on, keep it, just turn the side of the head and you just try to remove a lot of it with just your fingers and stuff and go on from there. So, if you want to just, at that point, just stop and just do compressions, please do so because again, we want the heart circulating and we're doing ventilations anyways by doing compressions. So, the most important thing is moving the blood around. And that's what we need to do. Thirty times, and at the end of thirty, if they've vomited and you're all alone and you don't want to get sick, keep on doing compressions. Just keep on doing your compression till somebody gets there.
So either way, if their chin is touching, depending on the position of their
So, and it might Right, so you get there, you come home, somebody's in bed. We don't want them on the bed, don't want them on a sofa. We want them on a hard surface, so you're always going to bring the person to the floor. Right, we want the hard surface so that we can do compressions freely. Right, you've got something hard that we're doing compressions and we're able to compress the chest. So Yep.
And you hope that they've replaced the pads?
I'll be right back.
True.
Some of them have raises in their shirt.
Some AEDs do have raises in them. If you're willing to do that, or if you have, if some clippers or if somebody's got tape in the house, just, you're doing the same thing. So
That's, that's because you want, you don't get a good shock if there's hair on the chest?
No. Because it, because now you have a space in between the, the pad itself and the chest. So you might burn the hair, cause a little fire. From electricity, yes, because you don't have a good contact. So there's now an air gap between the chest and, and the chest with, from the hair.
Now we say, we say chest, but like if there's.
This is the chest, so you want skin, pad to skin contact for the most part. Even shaving, you're not getting it right down to.
So what do you do if somebody has an extremely hairy chest?
Pull it.
Just pull it?
They're not going to feel it. They're unresponsive and dead right at this moment, right? Right, so you're trying to save their life.
But if there was only one pad, right, and they, because we're getting fixated on just the chest, we could put it just maybe on the back or the side a little bit?
So
If it's less hairy or.
So it's, so if you want, here, there might be less chest but not really, right? Most men have, it's here and down along the abdomen, right? So, it's either rip it out. If there is, if you're lucky to have a PD set in there, use a PD set. If not, then it's, it's just ripping it out if you can, or, or tape, or, or but you can't, I don't want you getting hurt by putting your hand over it to keep it in place, over it and then having somebody shock. That's not your.
At the end of the day too, it's really just, it's, get that call to 911 in there.
Right, let us get there.
Even if it's just, you're doing compressions the entire time until they get there, is better than worrying about his hairy chest when a pad goes.
As, as a paramedic, you come, me coming, if all you've done is circulation, I'm going to praise you to the end of time. I want, I just want that pump to continuously go because that, that helps, goes a long way. You're feeding the brain, even though it's just getting a little bit of oxygen from the respiration that it's getting, it's something, right? It doesn't have to be a lot. So we're perfusing, we're getting a little bit of the carbon dioxide off gas and we're getting a little bit of oxygen on the hemoglobin to be transported to feed the muscles. Right? The biggest organ in our body that's the boss that says, "I want everything," it's the brain. Even over the heart, the heart saying, "Okay, I gave up," but it still needs a lot of oxygen too. And everything else, it just shut, it shuts, shuts a lot of the organs down, right? So the more, the quicker we can get circulation going, there's probably less end organ failure, right? Because a lot of times, the kidneys shut down and then they, they're on dialysis after. Because now the kidneys shut down, it's hard to get them started back up again. Because they're, but it's the brain that said, "Hey, I'm greedy, I want, it's for me." Not for you.
I'm, I'm in awe at how hard that is to do. I really am. I mean, you think you're just pressing, but.
And we've come a long way though. When I first started, it was one one thousand, two one thousand, three one thousand, four one thousand, five one thousand, and you give a breath. We were killing people. We weren't actually saving anybody because we weren't even starting the pump up, right? Doing the thirty, we're starting the pump, we're getting circulation going by doing the compressions on the chest.
That's what the lights are for, don't I realize?
Right, so me coming, so going down and coming back up. If the red light is on, that means I'm still too heavy on the chest. So, so.
So when you're doing that, there's a hot pump every time you do that?
You're squeezing the, yep. It's squeezing blood out. Again, me coming up so, and getting off the chest allows the blood to return into the heart. It's not a lot of
Right.
Because we're just starting to push. Pushing out the left side of the heart is bigger than the right side of the heart. So we're pushing lung, blood into the lungs and back into the heart, back out of the heart, and then to the rest of the body.
But you've done this a long time. Do you, this is, to me, this is very hard.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not easy, yeah.
So, yeah, and some people, two minutes, three minutes, I'm exhausted, I can't do it anymore.
Yeah.
Right? You're getting, you hyperventilate and then you pass out yourself.
So instead of using the muscle power, you need to use your body?
Well, that's why I'm saying, knees to chest, shoulders over the center of the chest and just push down with your arms locked. That's going to allow you to do the compression. Doing it this way, you're using your whole body and stuff. So locking the arms, it makes it easier for you because now you're doing, you're using your body weight to do the compressions. And it's easier right here on the floor than it is in the back of the ambulance and you're going around corners, you're driving. Yep, and stuff, so.
How realistic is the chest compared to a real human chest? Like to break through that?
So this is, this is really realistic and stuff. It's probably a little bit stiffer than a regularly human being. Yep. Child, it's going to be one hand and you're still going to do the thirty to two. You can use one hand. Up to the age of 14 years old, they're figuring that, that's
About an elderly person.
An elderly person, if they're frail.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're still, you're going to, you're going to use one hand.
Just one hand?
But just still, it doesn't matter, this, they're old, their bones and the sternum, the sternum is cartilage. The ribs are going to break off. You're going to hear it, crack, 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 crack. There's no, no avoiding it. None. None.
Child's still thirty to two.
Every, everything is thirty to two. It, it, it just went up to, everything's thirty to two. It was for, uh, it was, it was fifteen to two, no, it was, it was fifteen to two for two people and then it was thirty to two for one person. So we're just doing, it's now just become more simplified, it's just thirty to two. So, and I'll, I'll demonstrate, I'll demonstrate on the baby. Let me see this.
Wait a minute, I've got to feed it.
So, on the baby, they used to teach, uh, on the side and using your two fingers or you could use your two knuckles and you're going to go right in between the nipples, you're going to do the same thing. And do it that way. May now want you to be close to the baby, wrap your fingers around the back using your thumbs in the same spot. And doing the thirty-two compressions. What happens with children? It's their respiratory rate declines, they're having a hard, tough time breathing and that's what slows their heart down and that's what puts them into cardiac arrest. Drowning, you know, that's, again, it's all got to do with respiratory. Unless it's a congenitive heart problem that they have, most of the time it's been, it's a respiratory problem.
You say baby, three months, six months?
So, up to a year old. Yep. Day one to a month old, it's still called neonates. After thirty days, then it becomes a child, an infant. But they're all beating at 150 beats a minute at that age. Right, so.
Four, five, six-year-old?
Four, five, so you're looking at 40 kilos or so, 90 to 100 pounds you want, you're going to still be doing just one hand, right? So, and again, this, this is very important, uh, of just knowing how to do it. As we do it on the service, when we're in the house, we pick up the child, hold the head and we're using our arm as, as a hard surface and we're doing the compressions this way. And then we'll give him the breaths and then.
Does it matter if you do it on the floor or on the arm? Or is it just?
It might even be better on a table for everybody and stuff. We can do it right now quickly if you want to get, just do the baby and then we'll come back and really go through two-person CPR on, on, on the adult mannequin if that's okay.
Yep.
Alright?
Yep.
So, she's going to come in, baby's down. Here's the difference between an infant and an adult. Infant's down, start CPR right away. Alright, we're going to quickly check, shake the baby a little bit. Are you okay? Getting a response? If you see no, uh, no breathing, you're going to begin CPR. Thirty to two. I'm going to go call 911 and get the AED. And this is just a puff, so it's not much, you won't see it on the, on the mannequin. This is just like that. Even if you're going to do mouth-to-mouth, it's just filling your cheeks with just a puff of air and giving that, okay? I got the AED. I've turned it on.
Apply pads to patient's bare chest.
And here's the difference, right?
Plug in pads connector next to flashing light.
And then Yep, and she can still be doing that.
Apply pads, plug in connector.
Until it says, it's going to analyze, then she can stop doing.
Analyzing heart rhythm. Do not touch the patient. Shock advised. Charging. Stay clear of patient.
I'm clear, you're clear, we're all clear. She's going to get right back and doing compressions.
If needed, begin CPR.
Don't have to tilt the head back on a baby, their airway is very, very small. You tilt it back too far, it's going to collapse it and close it. So you keep it in a neutral position.
Yeah, is there such a thing that, say you come into such as like this and maybe the lips are turning blue?
If they're high, not, if they're, if they're shallow breathing and stuff?
You wouldn't do anything.
You can assist, if you, if, if you want to give breath that way, if they're sick and you want to give breath just to help. Again, it's only a puff of air that you're going to assist, doesn't, you can't synchronize, you know, you don't have the ability to synchronize your breath with their breath.
Right.
So you're just going to try to give them more breath, right? So we're looking to get the baby breathing again. If their heart is slowing down, it's because of the respiratory problem that's going on, right? Because, and that's what happens. You get, it starts slowing down because it, they're not getting oxygenated and once they go on a curve, kids, they get, go along so far, good, 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 and then they just drop. And it's, it's hard to get kids back because of that.
So, I know this is a CPR train, but how do you know that it's not a blocked item?
So, if we don't, so, given the respirations, if I see the chest with just that little puff, we're looking for chest movement. If we see the chest movement, then we know it's not so if it's blocked, if, if, if it's blocked at any time, if you suspect a block, you just reposition it just a little bit. It might be the tongue that's on the back there. And then you try giving the breath again, right? So, but you don't want to overextend, so you can go back a little bit, but you don't want to go too far back and collapse their windpipe and stuff. And if you're suspecting, uh, they've choked on something, the thing that we do, let me just remove this. You can leave them on. So, we're going to take them, put them in our arm, flip them over, head down. Going to give one, two, three, four, five. Support them, going to give five chest compressions. Same, you're not going to move to the stomach or anywhere. On the infant, it's still the same, one, two, three, four, five. You're going to quickly look. If you see something, you'll go for it, but don't do a blind sweep looking to see if you can grab something because you might be pushing it farther back into their airway. So we don't want to do that. It's only after doing the, the, the back slaps and the chest compressions that you look. If you don't see anything, keep right on going. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, look. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five. Look, if you see it, something and you can grab it and pull it out, but if you can't. And, uh, if they start crying or if they start breathing on their own, then you know that you've unblocked it. You might not see what, what was the blockage. Adult is the same thing, if, you know, we're, as adults, we're even crazier because we're sitting at a table, we're eating and all of a sudden, oh, we get up. We don't want to embarrass ourselves. We go to the bathroom, a lot of people die in the bathroom because they're choking and then are, they're too afraid to say that they're choking. So, universal sign, choking, I'm choking. If you're alone, you find a chair, you get your chest over, over the, and you just throw yourself down on it. That's causing a compression of the diaphragm to help loosen the, the blockage if you're home alone, by yourself. If not, you have some friend, it's the fist in between the belly button and the bottom of the, the sternum. And you're going to give the five quick abdominal thrusts that way while you're holding them. And you, you do it until, see if they can speak. If they can't speak, then it's still blocked. You do it till they're collapsing your arms, you lie them down, you just start doing chest compressions when they're collapsing your arms.
Even if you get stuff still in there, you do that?
Yep. Cause now it, it's, you're suffocating, and your heart's gonna stop. And by doing the chest compressions, it might be better than the abdominal thrust that you've been doing, and might move that blockage out of the, out of the trachea. Okay? So, we'll have everybody do CPR on, on the infant. We'll do the thirty to two, if that's good, with everybody. I'm gonna leave the pads on.
I'll do your oxygen for you.
Okay, good, good, good.
So, I'm gonna have you get over here, Linda, and just, so, you'll use this hand.
Yep.
Remember, the, the point goes over the nose, and, and the round part goes over the mouth, all right?
Yep.
Hold it like this and just go.
Yep. Quicker. You're looking at a hundred twenty to a hundred and thirty that you want. Good. Yeah, yeah. You're gonna have trigger thumb by the time you're done. Yes, we're hoping for that, right? Yes.
Brad is doing such a great job.
This is your fourth one.
One more, other than that.
And if I didn't have this, I could just breathe, right?
Yep, you're gonna, no, you're gonna cover the mouth and the nose on the infant.
With my face, I would cover?
With your mouth, you're covering their mouth and their nose. And again, it's just a puff of air that you're looking for, just to see if the, so. No, you're covering the mouth and the nose, cause it's all connected, right? So we're covering, we're giving the, going into the nose and the mouth. No, no, it isn't. Yeah. Even counting, so you're counting quick. An adult, you, you, like, we're doing, we're, we're going for a rate of, well, a hundred to a hundred and twenty, right? But it's that to get the blood circulating around. And if you kept on doing compressions, and, and she counted, and she said thirty, and you just gave the breaths, that'd be okay too. Again, the thing is, we want the heart to be doing the pumping, to get the blood circulating, to get the. And support the head when you go back. So, yeah, and then, yeah. Quicker. Three, four, five. So again, with the infant, you do the first round, you do CPR for two minutes. If you're alone, and you don't have a phone, you can pick the baby up and you can move. You can move out of the house screaming, hollering, or move to a phone, somewhere that you can call nine-one-one to get the help that you need. So, and you initiate CPR, do it for two minutes, get that good round in, and then move with the child to get it. Depends on how big the child is, if it's a baby, you can bring the baby with you, if it's a child, you might be able to pick him up and carry him, and lay him down next to the phone, now get the phone going, and, and stuff, if it's just a house phone, right? Thank you, Mrs. Goome. We, it's, for the bystanders, it's normal, okay? Cause you, you're thinking, okay, it gives me a rest. But when, when we're out in the field, we're doing, we're doing it constantly. And they're just, we're counting, and we're giving the breath as they're heating thirty, and we're still doing, on our next thirty. Just so that it's getting the ventilation, so. So this is good if it's, if you're doing it for a choking baby, right? Just somebody, if the baby's start breathing now, it's, I mean, if the baby's not breathing, has no pulse, right? We're gonna check. Are you okay? Are you okay? Gonna look at the chest, see if there's any chest rising. And the, the place to feel for a pulse is to break your pulse on the arm. So if you push up on your, on your, uh, bicep, you can feel the, you'll break your pulse against your, the humerus bone.
Gotta push through my muscles, you know?
Yes, absolutely, but you should be able to feel, you don't have to go up, you can feel it right through.
Again?
Yeah, yeah, you push up against, you go to the middle of your arm, push up on the muscle, and you should be able to feel the pulse, of the break your pulse against the, against, against the bone.
Now, is that where you check for babies?
That's where you check for babies and stuff.
Feeling in my fingers.
Oops, excuse me.
Am I in the right place?
So, you're gonna go here and go up, and you're gonna feel.
Can you feel it?
Yeah.
I'm dead.
So, go right here, go up and push.
I don't feel it, I felt it on my neck before.
So, here's, here's.
This one I can feel.
That, and that just continues here.
Oh yeah, I feel it now, way up, yeah.
Yeah.
This I can always feel, yeah.
Are you okay? Are you okay? No breathing, no chest rise, no pulse. Call nine-one-one. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
Apply pads to patient's bare chest.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
Analyzing heart rhythm. Do not touch the patient. Shock advised. Charging. Stay clear of patient. Deliver shock now. Press the orange button now.
I'm clear, you're clear?
Shock delivered.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. One, two, three, four, five, six.
If needed, begin CPR.
Yes. She's gonna say, no, no. So, that's when you have the baby choke.
Okay, all right, yep.
You're gonna shake it, are you okay? Are you okay?
Are you okay? Hey, are you okay?
So, you're gonna look to see if you see any chest rise, you don't see any chest rise, then you're gonna feel for the pulse at the front.
Nope. Call nine-one-one.
I got the AED. Got the AED. No, you don't put them in.
Apply pads to patient's bare chest. Plug-in pads connector next to flashing light.
Does it matter whether the front or the back?
You, you wanna give one in the front, one in the back? It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Even though it shows, it's the same. It's still gonna get charged, it goes from one pad to the next. Clear.
Do not touch the patient. Shock advised.
You stand back.
Charging. Stay clear of patient.
Clear.
Deliver shock now. Press the orange button now. Shock delivered.
Then we get right back on the compressions.
If needed, begin CPR.
Thirty.
How long is it when you just do the pads, when you do that, you do the pads, and you get the bead back, and you're gone, and you have to continue?
So, for, for children, it's a long time. It's even longer for the children, again, cause they're, with the bodies, they, they don't have, it's not mature, the whole nervous system is a.
Six, seven, eight, nine, thirty.
It goes long, those things. Good. I can't use them long, and it just drops off, and then it's hard to give them that.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, thirty.
Gradually slowly go down, and you can live it, well, if you're sitting, if you're lying down and not, right? And you get a pulse, it's just like, you might not be alert enough. So, as it, it slows, and maybe it just goes along, and it shuts.
Seven, eight, nine, thirty.
Good.
I was waiting for that thing to beep again. So it doesn't matter, cause that looks like the back, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, as long as it's one in the front, one in the back. It's there for a reference, but on the kids, we know that it's front to back, and adults.
Right arm, my shoulder to left?
To left chest.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong, even with the adults doing chest to back.
Can't do it that way.
You can do it that way. That, you know, maybe in a few years, that's where it will be going to. But for right now, it's still delivering a shock. That way.
Analyzing heart rhythm.
See, we did. So, we'll take the shirt off, we'll have some, two more people.
Oh, you again?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Are you okay? Are you okay?
Out.
Call nine-one-one!
Apply pads to patient's bare chest. Plug-in pads connector next to flashing light. Apply pads, plug-in connector. Analyzing heart rhythm. Do not touch the patient.
Do not touch the baby.
Shock advised. Charging. Stay clear of patient. Deliver shock now. Press the orange button now. Shock delivered. If needed, begin CPR.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
One, two. Good.
Junior.
Junior.
Call nine-one-one!
You don't see any chest rise, and you don't feel any pulse?
Get the EED.
We'll shut that off.
The baby's alive.
People really step up though.
Oh, poor Junior.
I guess bolts, is that what comes out?
So, it's joules.
Joules.
It's joules. So, an adult, it's like two hundred joules that it'll charge up to, and, and, and for the infant, it starts probably around thirty, and goes up from there.
And what's that equivalent to?
So, it's, like, the joule, you get a.
Give me a finger, put in this.
So, it's not. So, um, this is probably a nine-volt battery, like, going across a nine-volt battery.
Yeah, okay.
For the child and stuff.
Okay.
An adult, it's, it's definitely a little more.
Okay.
So, this works on impedance, and it measures the impedance, how much it's gonna take, so, this just, this is, goes up until uh, forty kilograms, which is almost like a fourteen-year-old child, right? Forty kilograms is like ninety pounds and stuff, so.
But normally?
And then anything after that, the adult will take, you can, you can use it as an adult.
So, around a hundred?
Same machine. It's the resistor here that calculates, yes.
So up to a hundred pounds, you should use that?
Up to ninety pounds, right. You're gonna use this, and then, so.
So do the, the kits come with both?
Yes.
Yeah. Some kits do. Depends on the kit, and where you're getting it from. Most of them will do, have both in them.
So what do you do if it doesn't?
So, so who you, whoever you're buying it off of, you gotta ask them, does it come with both?
Oh, I gotcha.
So if you're, so if, you're out of prison, and you're not gonna need, for an infant or a child, right? It's only gonna be adult pads in it.
Not necessarily, because of children, the children go visit. There's visitors, there's children that visit.
I apologize, you're right, yes, but for.
But there could be something that wouldn't have childrens in it, it'd just be the adult.
Well, if that's what, that you're, you're planning for, yes. But in the, in that visiting area, it might, they should have one, and it should have both at that point. By checking the pads, one will say pediatric on it, and the other one will say adult. And so. Are we comfortable with this? And we're comfortable with the adult?
Other than the fact that I don't know that I have the presence of mind to really do it in that situation.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm exhausted, I didn't do anything.
So.
You never wanna be put in that situation, but if you are, make sure you.
And then again, so, and if we have family members that don't wanna be resuscitated, and they get a molt, make sure that the doctor is signing them. We're getting a lot of the, the doctors are just handing them the paper, and say, fill it out and put it on your refrigerator, and it's not a legal and binding molt, or DNR, because it's not signed. It's supposed to be signed by the patient and the doctor at the same time.
Oh, really?
So, and if it's just your signature on it, and there's no doctor's signature, then we're not supposed to honor it. But a lot of the doctors are just handing out, it's a pink piece of paper, and it's asking your wishes. Do you want chest compressions? Do you wanna be intubated? Or do you want just to be given medications?
Do you wanna be transported to the hospital that says?
Also there to, yeah, so.
What happens if you provide somebody that didn't wanna be revived, where you're just being a kind human being?
Depends, so, um, if they're adamant, say, say they have, uh, cancer, and they're at home, at an hospice, it happens a lot. The hospice nurse hasn't gotten the doctor to sign the form yet, so it's not at the house yet. So it's with them. So when you send anybody's home on hospice, he wanted to come home to die. Then it's up to us, we can start CPR and say, call the emergency room doc, and say, hey doc, this is what's happening, he's got lung cancer, he was sent home on hospice, he wanted to die at home. He said, we started CPR, and he, he can say, yes, cease resuscitation at this time.
Oh, so the doc can tell you?
The doctor in the emergency room can tell us to stop. Right.
God bless you and your job, that's all I can say.
No, we thank you. So, are we ready for a test?
We're ready for a test, I think so, yep.
Again, I'm Ralph, this is Andrea. We were here having a great time on the city councils, uh, teaching them how to do CPR. Again, even if you're watching from home, the main thing I would like you to take down is doing chest compressions. As long as you're pumping the blood around in your loved one, until we get there to help out, that's gonna benefit them the most. You don't have to worry about breathing for them, we'll get there quick, as soon as we can. If it's not the city, it might be. we can, if it's not the city, it might be somebody else, but somebody will get there, and the fire department can also take over and, and, and continue the CPR that needs to be done. Just remember, every ten seconds, I mean, every minute that you're not doing CPR has ten percent chance of not coming back, so the quicker we get CPR going, and continuing, it is, it's the best thing for your loved ones, or friends, or even a stranger that you don't even know. So thank you, if you just, remember just doing the CPR, that'd be great, thanks.